Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this town meeting to order. To Mr. Ronald Moody, Constable for the Town of Madison in the County of Somerset, State of Maine, greetings in the name of the State of Maine. You are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Madison in said county and state qualified by law to vote in-town affairs to meet at the Madison Junior High School Auditorium in said town on Monday, the 13th day of July 2020 A.D., at 7:00 in the evening, then and there, to act upon Article 1 and Articles 3 through 31 as set out below to wit. And to notify and warn said inhabitants to meet at the municipal building in said town on Tuesday, the 14th day of July 2020 A.D., at 8:00 in the forenoon, then and there, to act upon by secret ballot Article 2 as set out below. The polling hours therefore to be from 8:00 in the morning until 8:00 in the evening. Article 1, to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. Do I hear any nominations for moderator?
I'll make the motion, Attorney Hilton to be chosen as moderator.
Second.
I have a first and a second for Ernie Hilton. Do I hear any more nominations?
I have no nominations, please.
Hearing no more nominations, could I have those wishing to vote cast their ballots, please? Could you come forward, Ernie? Take your oath. I, Ernie Hilton.
I, Ernie Hilton.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of the state.
So long as I shall continue.
So long as I shall continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ernie Hilton.
I, Ernie Hilton.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As a moderator of this meeting.
As a moderator of this meeting.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And laws of the state.
So help me God.
I understand that voting is taking place by blue cards. Is that correct? So that's what we're going to be looking for. As an, as an, I think we've been out of town. Speakers?
There will be no out-of-town speakers.
Okay. You have anything you want to say?
I have a couple of comments.
Do you want to make them right now?
Excuse me, do you want me to, are you going to appoint Julie as the deputy moderator?
Oh.
And I'll go down and swear her.
Yes. We're just appointing Julie Forbes as a deputy moderator for the downstairs portion of the meeting. Yes, you want to speak?
Sure. Thank you, Ernie. Thank you, folks, and welcome to town meeting in a different setting. Obviously, things have to be done a little bit differently by the laws of the state, and we'll do our best to accommodate and allow you the freedoms that you have to vote and participate in local government. I do want to say a word about voting tomorrow. Many of you probably have already voted absentee, and that's great, that's helpful. But if you are planning to come to the town office fire department to vote tomorrow, keep in mind that we will be open for voting only. Many times, people come to vote and license their ATV and pay their taxes and that sort of thing, but because of the distancing guidelines that we have in place at the town office and the fire station, we will not be able to accommodate both tomorrow. So help us spread the word, if you will, that voting only from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the town office tomorrow, and we'll be back resuming regular business on Wednesday morning. Just a quick word, anybody that's had to do business with us or many of the other places in town, thank you for your patience, thank you for your understanding. I'd like to say some kind words about the staff at the town office who really have gone above and beyond to try to accommodate folks as best they possibly can in these very trying and difficult circumstances. If you have already voted, you'll probably have noticed some new and different names taking roles in running for certain offices, and that's because we have a few folks that have served in the same capacity for a long time who have chosen not to run again. I'd just like to recognize them quickly. Steve Dean has chosen not to run for the Board of M.A.W.'s Board of Directors, and he served there faithfully for 25 consecutive years, so we appreciate that effort. Jack Ducharme is not running again for selectmen after nine years as a selectman, and we wish him well in his future ventures. And George Elias finished his comeback tour with another three years of service to bring his total service on the Board of Selectmen to 28 years. So there's going to be some change and some difference going forward on these boards and committees, and I think that's a sign of a healthy community. The articles before you tonight are fairly straightforward and fairly simple. The budget articles reflect a budget that is about $150,000 less than the budget you approved last year, and that was taking into consideration some changes due to COVID and some impact on revenues. The school budget is down due mainly to the receiving more state aid this year, and the county budget is pretty much flat. With those things in place heading into setting your tax rate in August, we anticipate the tax rate to be flat or stable. We do not anticipate an increase in the mill rate or the tax rate this year. So the majority of these articles are budget articles and the similar annual recommitment type of articles to give the selectmen certain authorities. The only two significant differences this year is there is a shoreland zoning article. In your packet, there's a one-sheet summary of the shoreland zoning changes. I commend the planning board for their hard work on this. Most of these were updates required by the state. And there is a road discontinuance article, the last article, that has to do with a short piece of road called Chamberlain Court off of Lower Mills Road in East Madison. The land has changed hands, and now one landowner owns all of the land, and so they're asking that the road at his property be discontinued from that point. So in your packets, there's a little map, there's some of the wording for that. If you have any questions about that, we'll be glad to try to answer those questions when we get to that article. Other than that, folks, I just want to talk a little bit about what's going on down at the former Madison paper site. That's always a question that comes in. The company that has bought the site that plans to do manufacturing there, Golab, they still have the same plans, but I always remind folks, they are a startup company, which means they have to spend a lot of energy raising capital to get their project off the ground. A lot of the closings with banks that they were going to do in April and May have obviously been delayed, so they're hoping to get some of those closings done in July so they can be on track, and you can actually see some activity going on down by the river. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you for coming and have a great town meeting.
Thank you, Tim. As an Article 1A, I'd like to have this, have a motion to adopt the Main Moderator's Manual, Sixth Edition, 2005, as published by the Maine Municipal Association, adopted as the rules of governing this meeting. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, that's a vote. I'm told there are no out-of-town speakers, and I guess we can proceed accordingly. Article 2 is a, by unanimous consent or otherwise, we're delaying action on that until tomorrow's vote, so we move on to Article 3. I would remind this body that as I read these articles, many of them, some of them do in fact have a dollar figure in them, so if I read the article and I ask for a motion, somebody says "so move," that's a complete motion. If, for instance, there is no dollar figure in the motion, in the article, then saying "so moved" is not a complete motion. I need to have some sort of a reference to what the selectmen have recommended or whatever. So I'm going to read Article 3. To see if the town will vote to pay the directors of the Department of Electric Works $10,200 for the ensuing year, said sum to be paid from the funds of the department.
So move.
I have a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article 4. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $11,200 to pay its Board of Selectmen, advisory board recommends yes. Do I hear a motion?
Move.
Do I hear a, a second? Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands or your cards. Down hand, down cards. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 5. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to use up to $25,000 from undesignated revenue in the event of overdrafts, unforeseen events, or emergencies. Any use of this contingency arrangement must be voted on at a select board meeting, and the expenditures made will be listed in the subsequent town report. Total transfer of undesignated revenues shall not exceed $25,000 within the fiscal year. Transfer of undesignated revenues in excess of $25,000 must be authorized by a town meeting vote. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 6. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for general government in the general fund. Administration went $505,865. Planning board, $5,825. Code enforcement, $29,500. Boards and committees, $19,325. Assessing services, $40,000. Elections, $4,000 for a total of $604,515. Against this will be the approved use of revenue from TIFs of $44,500 for a total raised by taxation of $560,015, recommended by both the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So move, recommend the amount.
Sorry. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 7. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public safety in the general fund. Ambulance, $92,250. Police, $455,000. Fire, $110,230. Animal control, $11,525 for a total expenses of $669,255, against which there would be a credit of approved revenue from TIF of $30,000 for a total raised by taxation of $639,255, being the amount recommended by the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So move, recommend the amount.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 8. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public utilities in the general fund. Streetlight, $60,000. Municipal solid waste and recycling, $225,000. Storm drains, $25,000. Fire protection, meaning hydrants, $255,000. Total expenses, $545,000, against which there would be a credit of approved revenue from TIF of $50,000 for a total raised by taxation of $495,000, being the amount recommended by the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
Who recommends the amount? Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 9. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public works highway in the general fund. Public works, $632,460, against which there would be a credit of approved revenue from the TIF of $75,500 for a total raised by taxation, $556,960, being the amount recommended by the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
Who to accept?
You're accepting what? The recommended amount?
The recommended amount.
Okay. Is that a second?
Second.
Saying, we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 10. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for recreation in the general fund. Selectmen recommend $78,050, as does the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So move, recommend the amount.
Sorry. We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 11. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for cemeteries in the general fund. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend $27,050. Do I hear a motion?
So move, recommend the amount.
Sorry. We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 12. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for community services in the general fund. General assistance, $15,000. My community programs is the U.S. Naval Sea Cadets Corps, $1,000. Lake Association, $5,500. American Legion flags, $600. People who care food covered, $14,500. Recycling committee, $1,000. Smith-Somerset Community TV, Channel 11, $1,500 for a total community programs of $24,100. For service organizations, we have the Madison-Anson Senior Citizens, $4,500. Somerset Humane Society, $7,650. Hospice volunteers of Somerset County, $2,500, $2,300. Spectrum Generations, $4,500 for total service organizations of $18,950. And the grand total for community services is $58,050, being the amount recommended by both the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I hear a motion?
So move, recommend the amount.
Sorry. I have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 13. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the Madison Public Library and the general fund. The selectmen and the advisory board both recommend $121,585. Do I hear a motion?
Who recommends the amount?
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 14. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for town-owned property in the general fund. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend $27,875. Do I hear a motion?
So move, recommend the amount.
Sorry. We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 15. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for road surface projects. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend the $180,050. Do I hear a motion?
So move, recommend the amount.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand, your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 16. To see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for highway equipment purchases. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend $105,000. Do I hear a motion?
So move, recommend the amount.
Sorry. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 17. To see what sum the town will vote, will raise and appropriate for future fire department equipment purchases. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend $30,000. Do I hear a motion?
So move, recommend the amount.
Sorry. We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? If not, I'm going to, seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 18. To see what sum the, do I hear another?
Feedback.
Oh, feedback. To see what sum the town will vote, will raise and appropriate for library capital fund for roof replacement. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend $50,000. Do I hear a motion?
So move, recommend the amount.
Sorry. We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 19. To see if the town will vote to allocate the balance of the snowmobile excise tax refund to the Abenaki Snowriders Snowmobile Club. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Sorry. I have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 20. To see if the town will vote to, revoke the date of September 15, 2020, or 30 days after commitment, whichever is later, as the date when the first one-half of taxes assessed for the current year shall become due and payable, and the date of March 15, 2021, when the second one-half of taxes assessed for the current year shall become due and payable, with taxes unpaid after said dates to bear interest at the rate of 8% per annum from said date. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 21. To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes for the year 2021, 2022, not yet due or assessed. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 22. To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to enter into a standard agreement with residential taxpayers establishing a "tax club" payment plan for property taxes whereby, one, the taxpayer agrees to pay specified monthly payments to the town based on his or her estimated and actual tax obligation for the current year property taxes; two, the town agrees not to charge interest on timely payments made pursuant to the tax club agreement; three, the town authorizes the collector to accept tax club payments for current taxes which may be due prior to the commitment of those taxes; four, the agreement is automatically terminated if a scheduled payment is late and the taxpayer then becomes subject to the same due dates and interest dates and rates as other taxpayers who are not participating in tax club; number five, only taxpayers who do not have any outstanding tax obligations for prior tax years are eligible to participate in the tax club program; and six, taxpayers wishing to participate in a tax club for a particular property tax year shall enter into an agreement with the town by a publicly advertised deadline determined by the tax collector. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 23. To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to advertise and sell town-owned personal property at public sale. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 24. To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to dispose of tax-acquired property in any manner that the selectmen deem to be in the best interest of the town. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
So move, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 25. To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to set all wages and salaries for the coming year except for those already provided for. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 26. To see if the town will vote to authorize the town manager, under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, to apply for grant monies and to expend monies received for the stated grant purposes. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Sorry. We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 27. To see if the town, in accordance with 36 MRSA Section 506(a), will vote to fix the rate of 4% interest to be paid on overpaid or abated taxes. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 28. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept any money or property, real or personal, from any donor, and such money or property shall be utilized as specified by the donor. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, that's a vote. Article 29. To see, shall an ordinance entitled "Shoreland Zoning" in "Chapter 478" be amended to meet the standard required by the State of Maine? Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Yes, sir.
Could somebody explain just what the new standards are or what the changes are for the Shoreland? I know there's an explanation in here, but I'm not quite sure as I understand it.
Well, you have an option. I have 68 pages here. I can give to the moderator, and he can read them to you. Well, there's a summary sheet in there that some, that touches on all the changes that were made required by the state. And so this is, this is a more detailed listing of those changes, but everything in there that was changed was changed to strengthen and enhance the standard that was already there. The only thing the planning board didn't follow to the letter with the state is they chose an option of timber harvesting in the shoreline zone to remain under local control and not state control. But in that summary sheet, that's in that packet, I believe it touches on the majority of the changes. I'm not quite sure what you're asking for as far as further explanation.
Your questions answered, Eric?
Tim, can you articulate what those differences are briefly?
Differences in...
What was and what is being asked. I can read the words, I don't understand what they mean.
Why don't I just look at, why don't I just go through this summary sheet? Applicability. It clarifies when zoning enforcement applies. This clarified some of the distances that structures needed to be away from the shoreline, and it helped clarify how to identify where the shoreline starts. When effective. This clarifies that this goes into effect when it's approved both by town meeting and by the state. This is the first step in that. If the town meeting approves the changes, then it goes to DEP, and they also have to approve the changes. Nonconforming structures. There's detailed changes to how a nonconforming structure can be expanded or added to. A nonconforming structure is like a grandfathered or existing property that's in the shoreline zone closer to the water than the shoreline zone allows it to be. You can do some changes to those nonconforming structures, and they've added to the list of what you can do to do that.
Mr. Malo, does that change the 30% rule?
No. No, these are only slight changes. It has not changed that 30% rule, which has been part of that for years. Table of land uses has just moved to a different, from the end of the ordinance to the middle. Land use standards, it updates structures permissible in resource protection. Again, it didn't add much, it just clarified what these structures are. Updates the total footprint allowed in resource protection areas. Updates requirements for decks and piers and floats. Provides the planning board, provides the planning board with authority to approve shoreline stabilization projects, and updates rules on campsites and RVs. I touched upon the timber harvesting, and I mentioned there that under that chapter, the town, the planning board has retained the current municipal standards, and the planning board felt comfortable with that, the town office feels comfortable with that. And then there were new sections added, and these are all the letters Q, R, and S, those are all completely new sections, dealing with hazard trees, dead trees, storm damaged trees, exemptions to certain land use standards, and revegetation requirements. In other words, if you, if you're planting along the shoreline, there's more specific rules and suggestions as what you could plant and what you should plant.
Are you set? Yes, Dick.
Can you expand a little bit more on what the hazard trees, dead trees, and storm damaged trees specifically? We have occasion to have trees come down naturally, and sometimes they land in the water, and sometimes they land on shore.
So in the, in the longer section here, the section for, new section for hazard trees, dead trees, and damaged trees is about just a little under two pages. I'll try to summarize it quickly for you. Point one, hazard trees may be removed without a permit after a consultation with a code officer, providing that certain requirements are met. Dead trees may be removed without a permit. And storm damaged trees may be removed without a permit after consultation with the code officer. These are slight changes. The requirements and conditions are pretty much the same as they used to be, but now you don't have to have a code officer sign off on the trees. Actually, if you, if you've ever experienced this, the code officer actually have to come out and mark and circle those particular trees that can and can't be touched. This kind of scales that process back a little bit.
Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Are you all set, Dick?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards.